Good evening. The adequate notice of this regular meeting is required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on June 1st, 2022. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tapping to Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
I'll call the roll now. Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Crowson?
Here.
Mr. DeSay? Mrs. DiMaggio?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. On?
Here.
Mr. Brize?
Here.
May I have a quorum?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10-4-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss material the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, student matter, and pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and/or matters of attorney-client privilege. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 45 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
We typically do a voice vote for this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The board is now in executive session.
Thank you. I'm asleep.
We're going to come back up now.
Motion to return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstention. The board is back in open session. On behalf of the board, thank the public for their patience.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the May 23rd, 2022 board meeting.
Second.
I'll call the roll in the minutes. Mr. Bishi? Yes. Mr. Crowson?
Yes.
Ms. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Brazile?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Mr. Brazile. On the HIB report, there were, there was one investigation confirmed at the middle school, one not confirmed in Mount Horeb, and on the suspension report, there was one in-school suspension and two out-of-school suspensions at the middle school and one in-school suspension at Woodland.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. President's remarks. Well, welcome. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight. We did it. The school year is complete, which I think is fantastic. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to express thanks to all who have made this a successful year, include their students, our families, our amazing teachers and staff, school bus drivers, and of course, our five great PTOs that we are afforded in this town. And certainly, I would like to offer my extended thanks to this board on the milestone. Appreciate all you've done, especially given the challenging years we've come from. So, thank you for that. I had the privilege of attending the eighth grade graduation this year, which was fantastic. It's always exciting to see our students as they reach that milestone. Again, congratulations to those students, as well as our other milestone years, including our fifth grade and kindergarten classes as well. For the benefit of the board, on this past Thursday, June 16th, I met with Mayor Sordillo, Watching Hills Regional High School President Bob Morrison, and a member of the Warren Township Police Department. This was at the mayor's request to further discuss safety and security in our schools. I think at our next finance committee meeting, we will put that on the agenda, and there will be information in the minutes afforded to that, but I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Certainly, the board thanks the mayor and the committee for their continued support of the district. Finally, I wanted to share with the board a press release that came across my desk this morning. I'm going to read it here. I did not write it. "The Somerset County Association of School Administrators is pleased to announce that Dr. Matthew Mingle was selected to represent the Somerset County, New Jersey, as our Superintendent of the Year in 2023. Dr. Mingle is a consummate professional who genuinely believes in the value of education, and he demonstrates a very strong commitment to lifelong learning. In addition to his, to his belief in the value of education, Dr. Mingle has consistently worked to make the students the top priority. In particular, Dr. Mingle led his school district through the COVID pandemic with creative problem solving. Dr. Mingle restructured his school, school classroom arrangements to keep students in person while many other districts were still doing remote learning. Dr. Mingle also implemented strategies like tests to stay in order to keep students in school. Dr. Mingle's peers in the Somerset County looked to his leadership and have been impressed with his, with his passion for education and the lengths that he will go to in order to make sure his students are receiving that education. Dr. Mingle is also recognized for his dedication to his profession through his contributions in the Somerset County Association for School Administrators, where he currently serves as an active member, key contributor, and treasurer. He is also the incoming president of the Morris Union Joint, Jointure Commission and vice president of the ASCD Board of Directors. The Somerset County Association of School Administration is proud to have Dr. Mingle represent our county as the 2023 Superintendent of the Year." So, Dr. Mingle.
Pick up a hobby after all of that.
Thank you for your continued leadership. Our students are the benefit of this. I could not have written this better myself. I feel like I've worked fairly close with you in over the past, I guess, six years I've known you. Thank you for everything. Our district, without a doubt, is better because of you. And I'm positive there are times where you felt like you were standing alone and only to realize the rest of us anyways, that you're just six steps ahead of us. So, thank you for leading us. Thank you for guiding us, and thank you for all you have done. And of course, congratulations on this award. So, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Brazile. Thank you for those nice words as well. It, it is very nice to be recognized by your colleagues. Certainly, the, you know, the superintendents in Somerset County all did the same kinds of things over the course of that, that time period that they're referencing. So, it's quite an honor for them to select me to represent the county. I shared with our leadership team today. I've shared it here before, and I share it with them, which is one of the reasons why they're probably giving the award just to get me to stop talking about things at meetings. But we're extremely fortunate in Warren.
We're going to come back up now.
Motion to return to open session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. The board is back in open session. On behalf of the board, thank the public for their patience.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the May 23rd, 2022 board meeting.
Second.
All right, I'll call the roll in the minutes. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowson?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Brzee?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brzee. On the HIB report, there were, there was one investigation confirmed at the middle school, one not confirmed in Mount Horeb. And on the suspension report, there was one in-school suspension and two out-of-school suspensions at the middle school and one in-school suspension at Woodland.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle, President's remarks. Well, welcome. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight. We did it. The school year is complete, which I think is fantastic. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to express thanks to all who have made this a successful year. Include their students, our families, our amazing teachers and staff, school bus drivers, and of course, our five great PTOs that we are afforded in this town. And certainly, I would like to offer my extended thanks to this board on the milestone. Appreciate all you've done, especially given the challenging years we've come from. So, thank you for that. I had the privilege of attending the eighth grade graduation this year, which was fantastic. It's always exciting to see our students as they reach that milestone. Again, congratulations to those students as well as our other milestone years, including our fifth grade and kindergarten classes as well. For the benefit of the board, on this past Thursday, June 16th, I met with Mayor Sordillo, Watching Hills Regional High School President Bob Morrison, and a member of the Warren Township Police Department. This was at the mayor's request to further discuss safety and security in our schools. I think at our next finance committee meeting, we will put that on the agenda and there will be information in the minutes afforded to that, but I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Certainly, the board thanks the, the mayor and the committee for their continued support of the district. Finally, I wanted to share with the board a press release that came across my desk this morning. I'm going to read it here. I did not write it. The Somerset County Association of School Administrators is pleased to announce that Dr. Matthew Mingle was selected to represent the Somerset County, New Jersey, as our Superintendent of the Year in 2023. Dr. Mingle is a consummate professional who genuinely believes in the value of education, and he demonstrates a very strong commitment to lifelong learning. In addition to his, to his belief in the value of education, Dr. Mingle has consistently worked to make the students the top priority. In particular, Dr. Mingle led his school district through the COVID pandemic with creative problem solving. Dr. Mingle restructured his school, school classroom arrangements to keep students in person while many other districts were still doing remote learning. Dr. Mingle also implemented strategies like tests to stay in order to keep students in school. Dr. Mingle's peers in the Somerset County looked to his leadership and have been impressed with his, with his passion for education and the lengths that he will go to in order to make sure his students are receiving that education. Dr. Mingle is also recognized for his dedication to his profession through his contributions in the Somerset County Association for School Administrators, where he currently serves as an active member, key contributor and treasurer. He's also the incoming president of the Morris Union Joint, Jointure Commission and Vice President of the ASCD Board of Directors. The Somerset County Association of School Administration is proud to have Dr. Mingle represent our county as the 2023 Superintendent of the Year. So, Dr. Mingle. Pick up a hobby after all of that? Thank you for your continued leadership. Our students are the benefit of this. I could not have written this better myself. I, I feel like I've worked fairly close with you and over the past, I guess, six years I've known you. Thank you for everything. Our district, without a doubt, is better because of you. And I'm, I'm positive there are times where you felt like you were standing alone and only to realize the rest of us anyways, that you're just six steps ahead of us. So, thank you for leading us, thank you for guiding us, and thank you for all you have done. And of course, congratulations on this award. So, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Brzee. Thank you for those nice words as well. It, it is very nice to be recognized by your colleagues. Certainly, the, you know, the superintendents in Somerset County all did the same kinds of things over the course of that, that time period that they're referencing. So, it's quite an honor for them to select me to represent the county. I shared with our leadership team today, I've shared it here before, and I share it with them, which is one of the reasons why they're probably giving the award just to get me to stop talking about things at meetings. But we're extremely fortunate in Warren to have the resources we need to do the job that our teachers do, our administrators do, which is due to the board's support, the community's support. And so, sort of the anecdote I shared at leadership, which I know my colleagues who are also very active in their associations will say is, we tend to just kind of sit in the corner quietly at those meetings and everybody expresses their concerns about things, and then we say we're very grateful to be where we are, and I can say I certainly feel that way. So, thank you for your support. And it has, yeah, it has been, this is the conclusion of my sixth year, and I can't imagine a better place to be a superintendent. So, thank you for that. A couple of quick other superintendent's remarks. I concur with the end of the year. In fact, we had our leadership retreat today. I don't know if the leadership team would have voted for me for this award, making them spend the entire day in a retreat the first day we didn't have students. But we did reflect, and there was a lot, there was a common sentiment that the last month or so, I started to feel like it was getting back to the way we remember things, and a lot of that has to do with end-of-the-year events. You know, the fifth grade event that the PTO did a phenomenal job with graduations and all those things. So, it was a great way to, to, to close out the year. For anybody watching at home, I would remind you that summer fun starts in what, in a week? And we, there's information in last week's community briefing about how to still get involved. Summer fun this year, as it often is, will be larger than any of our regular elementary schools are. We have about 400 students. We have about 400 students, I believe, signed up at this point. So, we're getting to the place where we have to think about whether one facility is actually enough to handle it, which is a great problem for us to face. I also just wanted to highlight one other program, the Warren Middle School Grade Six National Academic Team. They lost in the semifinals of the National Academic Championship, but the fact that they made it to the semifinals is an amazing accomplishment. They had a dominant performance in the, the round before that. It was a very exciting day at the middle school. So, congratulations to Dr. Cooper and the students who clearly have a great future ahead of them on the seventh and eighth grade teams going forward to continue the successes you heard about all year long. I'll have some other comments about the agenda later, but that's all for now.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on the agenda to presentations, I don't believe we have any similar to discussions. There are none on the agenda. We will move to committee reports, starting with the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee.
So, we met on May 23rd. We had about four. Okay, get the backup. We met on May 23rd. We had four topics that we covered. One was around professional development and the reflective protocol that the staff has an option to use. We have about 100, more than 100 staff members who uses approach. And for those of you who aren't familiar with that, it was actually the first time I had heard of it. It's an opportunity for teachers, they have to take a video of a lesson and then reflect on it with a sort of an advisor. And I know I don't like watching myself on video. So, I think it's just really amazing that they do this, and they, they volunteered to do this to be a sort of a critic of how they perform and how they can improve. And I, I think my understanding is that there's very few districts in New Jersey who actually embrace this method as much as we do in Warren. So, I think that's really great, a testament to the, the approach that we take to professional development. The second was around report cards. So, the upper elementary grades have diminished the emphasis on letter grades. For those of us who have kids in those grades, we're aware of that. And so, now some next steps to really optimize the report cards is to figure out how we can, in a meaningful way, overlay social emotional learning outcomes and, and progress to those report, the report cards as well. So, that's going to be some next steps for the elementary schools. And then, I think there'll be some work this year around how do you do that within the middle school as well? So, some exciting stuff there. We're also going to be launching a dashboard that's going to house the iReady results and the whole child survey results. So, we'll be notifying the community when that's live, they'll be able to take a look at that. And then, last, we talked about the summer curriculum rating and the programming.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Finance Operations and Security Committee, Mrs. Zahn.
Thank you. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met on Monday, June 13th with a very full agenda. We started out reviewing the 2023 transportation. Attached to the minutes and the agenda is a complete list of the routes and route costs. Through some fairly extraordinary efforts on the part of the administration, working with our vendor, six routes were able to be eliminated through consolidation with other routes. Appearing tonight as item B6 is an authorization for the renewal of the contract on some of the remaining routes. They, renewal on the contract is at the 1.91 authorized CPI increase. There are, however, about 10 routes, I believe.
Six.
Six remaining that have to be rebid?
That's correct.
Okay. We have six routes, which are not on the agenda tonight for renewal. The vendor is unable to offer those routes to us within the 1.91 authorized CPI increase, and those routes are going to have to be put out for a bid and will appear on an agenda at a later time. Finance Committee discussed in hopes that the savings resulting from the eliminated routes will be sufficient to cover the bids on the rebided routes. The Finance Operations and Security Committee then moved on to a discussion of, a continuing discussion of the food service. We are aware and that at any time that any of our schools hits 5% of our enrolled student body as eligible for free or reduced lunch, it will trigger a need for the district as a whole to return to either the national school lunch program or alternatively to some other form of food service. We did end the school year with one of our schools at 3.63%. We will start the new year slightly below that. But our demographer does indicate that we are 12 to 18 months away from that number, the 5% number, being experienced by the school district. And the Finance Committee, as a result, will be continuing to look at proposals that it can bring to the full board at a later meeting as to how we will address that. Part of the investigation and study that the, the Finance Committee has been engaged in did result in a visit to the Branchburg School District, where we had the opportunity to walk through, ask questions, and experience the food delivery that they have there at their middle school and at one of their elementary schools. Photos of that visit are available and gives us all an opportunity to look at what type of food service might be possible to deliver if we were in a position to have a kitchen within the school district. And that is among the items that the Finance Committee continues to evaluate. We then moved, I'm not sure I've got all of that. Yeah. We then moved on to the EOI projections, and I want to spend just a moment going over those. This does also relate to two items appearing on the agenda this evening. B7, which is a transfer of current year surplus to Capital Reserve, which contemplates approval of such a transfer to Capital Reserve in an amount not to exceed 3 million. Almost certainly will end up lower than that. And B15, which is a revision to the fund balance procedure. The surplus that the school district has as our end of year is not yet a known number. The fiscal year ends in, on June 30th. So, as the books are closed and that number becomes a known number, some portion of it will be added to or go to the 500, what was 464,000, now 584,000 dollar unallocated fund balance. That amount was increased, this, and which results in the revised fund balance procedure by the $120,000 that the board contemplated increasing it by when we had our budget meeting. That $120,000 represents the $120,000 that was added to this year's budget for student experiences. So, in the event, as was discussed when we approved the budget, in the event that the $120,000 is not used, $120,000 has been added to the unallocated fund balance, which would constitute a, if you will, an opportunity to lower taxes for the coming year. The bulk of the EOI is contemplated and proposed tonight to go into the Capital Reserve account. The other reserve accounts, the emergency reserve account and the maintenance reserve account, which have great restrictions on their use. Our business administrator feels comfortable, the administration feels comfortable that the balances that appear in those reserve accounts are adequate, and so, no addition to those reserve accounts is being contemplated. The amount of EOI that we have experienced this year is a result of some unanticipated and unanticipable changes that had happened throughout the course of this last fiscal year. The health insurance premium rates, which we have to budget on every year, are always a bit of a guess. The actual insurance rates aren't mean available to us until after the budget has been approved. Last year's insurance rates that were contemplated in that budget turned out to be higher than actual experienced rates. So, the district experienced a lower health insurance cost as a result. Additionally, in February, the district was granted a premium holiday. So, for that month, the health insurance obligation, which was over $600,000, did not have to be paid, resulting in that much contributing to EOI. Additionally, we had more than the customary number of retirements. And as prudent budgeting every year contemplates that there will be increases and decreases throughout the year in the cost of utilities, we always want to make sure that we are in a position to pay our utilities and keep our buildings operating, and there was some savings experienced there as well. At the end of the conversation, I will, of course, kick this to our business administrator to add anything he would like to add. But that is the crux of why it is we have the surplus that we have this year. It would be hard to have anticipated any of these, and so consequently, these amounts don't really inform how we could form a budget going forward. The, putting this into the Capital Reserve account is a prudent and available option for the district as these monies would not be used for normal operating expenses as they are a one-time item. Additionally, we do have additional capital projects, which we can anticipate will be coming down the road. We have very successfully done two referendums with, and where we have benefited from the Capital Reserve numbers that the district has been able to accumulate. And as a result, we have completed largely the five-year capital plan that had previously been in place. The Finance Committee is moving forward with an additional capital plan at which will list for us those capital items which need to be addressed in the coming five years. So, I again draw your attention to B7. B7 authorizing the deposit of surplus not to exceed 3 million. Again, it's not going to be 3 million, that's just a number that's used to give our business administrator and the administration the authority it needs to, to do the paperwork, to do the transfer. And then, B15, which is the revision to the fund balance procedure, which reflects the increase of the unallocated amounts from 464 to 584, representing the $120,000. Pardon me. Um, following that, we did take a look at updates on school safety. The administration has made a recommendation to extend the, an offer to the current security. Am I allowed to talk about this? I think so, yeah. To extend an offer to the current security compliance manager who is employed by the district part-time to move that to a full-time position for the 2223 school year. And additionally, there is a recommendation that a position that had been created for this year in the middle school of an additional counselor, that that be renewed next year for the full year. And I'm going to ask Chris, our B.A., please to correct anything I might have misstated and add anything you think I missed.
I have nothing to correct or add.
Wow.
Great job.
Okay. That's it for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Well done. Moving on to personal negotiations, I don't believe there was anything for that. Ad-hoc planning for elementary growth, nothing there. Ad-hoc return to school committee. That's the last time we'll see that one. Ad-hoc Committee on Dress Code, again, Mrs. Zahn, if you would not mind.
Thank you, and it's the last time you will hear this as well. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Dress Code met on June 9th, where we reviewed, again briefly, the policies and handbooks of our neighboring communities, but spent most of our time reviewing the survey results of a survey that was conducted of the middle school students, parents, and staff. After some, I think, very useful conversation, the decision was made by the committee to recommend to the board a revision to the policy on dress and grooming, policy number 5511, which appears tonight for its first reading under D1. The revision adopts the, or largely aligns itself with the policy for dress and grooming that appears in the Watching Hills Regional High School handbook. So, students leaving our district and heading to the high school will find no difference. I want to take this moment to acknowledge Rebecca Clemente, Nina Bowen, and Olivia Padilla, recently graduated eighth grade students, for the presentation that they made to the Board of Education, which resulted in the formation of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and their concerns guided the committee's review and discussions. And I hope that they are pleased that their advocacy and diligence has resulted in this change. The new policy isn't very long. May I read it to people?
Yes, please.
So that they have it?
Great.
Okay. The previous policy is deleted in its entirety. The new proposed language is as follows. "The personal appearance of every student is an important component of establishing a safe environment for optimal learning. Although dress is reflective of personal style, taste, and expression, students are expected to dress in an appropriate style and manner while on our school campus. They are expected to be neat and clean and to present an appropriate appearance that will be a credit to the student, parent, and school. Appropriate personal appearance should not negatively affect the educational setting and/or violate health and safety rules. Therefore, certain types of clothing, which may be acceptable for recreational wear, may not be suitable for school." The following bullet points follow. Clothing, which in the opinion of school personnel is excessively tight, revealing, or immodest. Clothing, which reveals undergarments. Clothing, which violates acceptable safety standards. Clothing, which promotes, endorses, advertises alcohol, drugs, tobacco products, or gang affiliation. Clothing, which displays biased, prejudicial, and/or profane language. Sunglasses, unless by medical order, to be worn indoors. Clothing that is see-through. Footwear must be worn at all times. Footwear that is considered unsafe, including but not limited to loose sandals, beach or shower-type footwear, thin-heeled clogs or roller shoes, is not permitted. Footwear must include a back. Head coverings may be worn as long as they do not cover the sides of a student's face or conceal the identity of the student at any time. The administration has the sole authority to determine when personal appearance and dress style do not meet school expectations. In these instances, administrators may request the parent guardian to bring appropriate clothing to school so that the student may change, or the student may be sent home with the parent guardian to change into appropriate attire. Students who fail to comply will receive consequences according to the Code of Conduct and school handbook. Students who fail to comply will receive consequences according to the Code of Conduct and school handbooks. These guidelines are in effect from the first day of school through the last day. This also applies to all school-related activities, including off-campus events and field trips. After making the determination that the committee would recommend to the full board this revision to the policy, there was also discussion about adequate training of personnel so that expectations for all staff members as to the policy adjustments and how to implement them are clear. And also that guidance would be given at the beginning of the new school year to students as well so that they can remain in compliance with the revised policy. And on that note, the committee recommends D one policy for screening. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mrs. Zon. Moving on to public commentary, this is our first of two public commentary for this evening. This will be for agenda items only. If any member of the public wishes to provide the board with comments and feedback, we'd be interested to hear those. If you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliation, if appropriate, and direct all comments to myself, it would be appreciated. We will first start in the room, seeing none, we will go to Zoom, if you could kindly use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. This is for agenda items only, public commentary. Seeing none, there will be a second opportunity for public commentary later this meeting. Is there a motion to close public commentary?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, public, the first public commentary has closed. Items for board consideration in action, Dr. Mingle, are there any items you wish to provide information on for the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brazi, just a few things here, I do want to call out A two, three, six, seven and eight, which are all fieldwork sites. With credit to Mr. Kimick, Dr. Resta, we are aggressively seeking to be a host to future educators, future administrators, people who want to be in the education pipeline so that we can be building our own future from within. So we are happy to be sponsoring, in what in many cases are local residents and former students actually, who are coming back to student-teacher, do other things like that. Item B eighteen, in the same vein, is an agreement to host a graduate program sponsored by Seton Hall University. The courses will take place right here in the Warren Middle School, and most of the students in this cohort are Warren employees who are seeking to further their education. So not only is it great that we can make it convenient for them, but it is also a revenue positive agreement for the board, which is really nice. So again, we get to help our employees and also bring in some revenue to help with the budget as well. And then finally, C seven. I just want to tick these off by category because it's a lot of new positions on an agenda where we don't normally have them. So the first three are based on higher-than-anticipated enrollment. That's actual enrollment in kindergarten at Central Woodland, including from some new development and grade one at ALT. All those classes have gone over this, the board's approved class size guidelines, which is why those sections are on the agenda tonight. As Mrs. Zon mentioned, we brought the recommendation to move from part-time to full-time for our security compliance manager through the finance committee. That's here as well. And one that I memoed the board on last week in two different places, which Mrs. Zon also mentioned, is an additional mental health professional in the district. The exact job responsibilities we've vetted through the personnel committee, we haven't been able to get the meeting on the schedule yet. We wanted to have the position on the agenda tonight so that we could get that process started so that by the time we meet again in a month, we've been able to do interviews and hopefully we'll have a recommendation to the board at that time. Those two positions, the security compliance manager and the social emotional learning specialist, go together, and it's a way to address what I know we all have concerns about with school safety, but also preventative measures to make sure that our students and our staff have the resources, the support they need. I shared with the board that we know that our families are struggling to get support where they, you know, when they want it. And part of the role of this, this individual will be to help our families navigate those places, which is quite a high need in our community. They will also have responsibilities for supporting staff and for directly working with students. And then finally, the preschool teacher position, which was added today. That is there not to fill today, but we are anticipating that by the time we meet again, it is very likely that we will have a need for an additional preschool section. The data is showing far greater evaluations, this is for the special education preschool program, than we typically see this time of the year. As of right now, we would be opening the school year at the place already filled where we normally see as many as ten students come in during the year because as, as children become three years of age, they become eligible for the program. So we're a little bit, we're a lot nervous about starting the school year without the room to grow and having to grow in the middle of the school year. So as you all remember, right now, we have a waiting list for the tuition-based preschool program. And if we add a section soon, it can be not totally revenue neutral, but it would offset significantly the cost of adding a teacher by bringing in some additional tuition-paying students. So we're contemplating the right time and we want to make sure we get it right, but having the position created allows us to fill it when that time comes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Any board members who wish to pull an item for a separate vote, ask questions on, discuss further? Mr. Crowson, I saw your hand first. B seven, separate vote, you got it?
Mr. Bishi, and just in addition to that, the B fifteen.
B as in boy?
B as in boy, yes.
B as in Brazi. Question?
Question, and yes, separate vote as well.
Separate vote will cover it then, great, thank you. Are there any other items other than B seven and B fifteen which have been pulled for a separate vote? Seeing none, Ms. Keller?
Motion to approve items for board consideration. A one through A eight. B one through B six. B eight through B fourteen. Sixteen through eighteen. C one through C twenty-three and D one through D two.
Second.
Yes, please. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowson?
I would just like to thank Mrs. Zon for her work leading the ad hoc committee on the dress code policy. As always, she was very thorough and detail-oriented and really, I'm sure Laura, Ms. Keller would concur, provided us with guidance and information to come to a good decision, so thank you. With that, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zon?
Yes.
Mr. Brazi?
Yes.
Motion's passed A zero. Thank you. Item B seven. Discussion?
Yes. I had some, I had a question in regards to how we came to the determination of how much of this end-of-year, I don't know if surplus is the right word to use for, for the money, but how much of that surplus to put towards the capital fund versus rolling over into another budget cycle? I wasn't sure if there were state statutory limits on how much you could roll over versus, you know, could we put all three million towards a future budget? I know it won't actually be three million by the end of it. Or is there a certain amount that we're capped at? And that kind of informed our decision where to put the rest of the funds.
All right, so. Want me to go?
Please.
All right. So the board has the following practice. And there's a order in which we fill our fund balance at the end of the year. And this, these set of motions, B seven, I know they're not together, but they function together, I know that's why they were pulled together, work, work together to give the administration direction on how to, once we've closed the books and they're audited in August, to present the findings back to you in the fall. First thing we do is we put the statutory maximum into the, what I call the unappropriated or unrestricted fund balance. In the recent past, that has been increased from two percent to four percent, but that is going to very likely revert back to two percent on July first of twenty twenty-two. So as of the end of these, this year, we can put four percent into that first bucket. After that, it'll likely revert back to two percent unless the state lawmakers take action again to keep it or change to some other number. So then the next thing we do is we look at next year's subsequent budget. And the board has had a practice in the past of putting approximately four hundred and sixty thousand dollars into, into that bucket. And that is essentially an assignment of the fund balance. I think that's the correct GAAP term for it, an assignment of the fund balance. And essentially, what, what the board is directing the administration to do is when you craft the budget, in this case would be the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, put that amount aside for essentially tax relief as an offset or an additional revenue in that subsequent number. That has been set in the past around four hundred and sixty. This year, the finance committee is recommending to increase that by the one hundred and twenty thousand. That's in alignment with the student enrichment activities that the board is now funding to make that part of the funds that come from the fund balance and not necessarily from taxpayers. And that was something that we discussed at the hearings, both I think in March and in April. And then at that, and then after that, really, the, the, what I would call the best practice is to put the money in a restricted account. One, there's, there are essentially, there are, there are more than three restricted accounts, but in practice, you really get to choose from three. The first is the emergency reserve, which the school, the district has funded at this point at about twenty thousand. It's a very difficult fund in order to pull things out of. So you put a limited amount of money in it, you sort of leave it at that, if you need it, you use it, and it usually just gets unused for a long period of time. And because the emergencies are, are, are hard to claim. The second is the maintenance reserve, and that is a reserve that is used as an offset against the operational budget under certain circumstances, again, to assist with the maintenance of the facility. So there's a certain set of line items in our budget that are, are classified as maintenance line items. If those line items are in danger of not being filled properly, to keep our facility at a certain level, we are allowed to move money and transfer money from the maintenance reserve into those line items and properly fund those lines. So the, the one that is really the best practice to put funds into, if you have foreseeable capital projects, is the capital reserve fund. And that is what the administration is, is recommending. That's what the administration took to the finance committee as a recommendation. And I believe the finance committee is, is moving forward that recommendation tonight as well. The amount that was, that is stated in the motion is essentially an estimate of where we believe we are today. That will be refined as we close our books. I know I'm repeating some of the things that, that Mrs. Zon stated, but I just want to make sure you're, you're, I'm answering your question as fully as I can. There, there, there is no statutory direction on, on what needs to go where. What I would say is there is, is, is best practices based on what has happened to schools in the past when they act in certain ways. So for example, in twenty-ten, that was, that, that was an important year for school finance. Because two things happened. Many schools, such as this district, lost all the school aid. And in the process of losing its school aid, some people may remember, we also lost some of our fund balance, some of our unrestricted fund balance. The best practice of business officials since that point was to put money in reserved, restricted reserve accounts. That way, it is, the state can't basically say, well, you didn't need our state aid, so, you know, we're, we're not going to take it back from you. So it is a best practice to put, you know, as, as much as you reasonably can in a reserve account to protect it and also to use it for suitable capital projects if you foresee them coming. We've just finished, I think, our second of five, of, of, our second five-year capital plan, so we've had two five-year planning cycles. We're, we're about to commence our third next year. And we are already starting to identify projects that would be used for this money. And, you know, we've also talked about the need in the food service area as well. So I, I hope that was a thorough answer to your question.
It was, just one, so just one clarifying question. The risk of increasing the amount of that money into the fund balance. Right, it's that standard practice, if you use it with four sixty, we're increasing it by one hundred and twenty this year.
The assignment of fund balance, yeah. Yeah.
The, the risk of increasing that further past additional one twenty would be that the state could then say to us, oh, you don't actually need as much state aid, look how much money you have left.
That's correct. But I would say at that level, five, four hundred, five hundred thousand, and, 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 and as you compare that to two or two and a half million, the likelihood of that being something the state would do would, would be lower. Any other questions on B seven?
Mr. Bishi? Yeah, so lifting out, just lifting it out from a layman's perspective, the way I was getting comfortable with these end-of-year balances is that you have actual spending and you have, you know, budgeted expenditures. And we, we came out spending two point five million dollars less than we budgeted this year. And, and that's
Can I just correct one thing? It, it also takes into account revenue that was under-budgeted?
This is tough, I know, and so I'm going to try to keep it very just fine-tuned here.
It's not just the expenses, though, it's, 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 it's both.
Okay, so we wind up in June with some excess surplus, right, that's the term. And I think, and, and in previous years, we had about two point four million in excess surplus in each of the last three years. And we put that towards the capital reserve as you're recommending that, administration is recommending now. And then we kind of rolled that into the referendum because we had all these capital projects, so we were able to spend nine million dollars in the referendum. But I always felt like, okay, it's a little bit of a relief valve, so if we have some extra money at the end of the year, we can use that for more than just capital reserve, we might be able to use that for tax relief. And I think the only way to use it for, and that tax relief, cutting taxes, just maybe keeping them flat at zero maybe in the ensuing year. I think the only way to do that is to put it in that second bucket, in the assignment of fund balance bucket, the five hundred and sixty-four right now. So I'm, I'm also the wondering, that kind of leaves us unshackled from just using it for capital reserve. If we were to put that in that assignment of fund balance bucket, then we could use it for whatever. Tax relief, operating expenses, if our expenses go up due to inflation, we could use it, our opportunity for spending what's now in excess of two point five million at the end of this year is, is wider. We could, we could use it for a lot of other things. Is that generally?
So if you put it in that second assignment bucket, you're, you're stating to myself and Dr. Mingle that it's only to be used for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So it, it, it couldn't then be, so the first bucket, that four percent bucket, that unrestricted unassigned bucket, if, if we had a bad year, we could come to you and say, we're having a bad year. We need to move some money from our unrestricted fund balance into this year's budget to make things work. However, what you've done by moving money into the assignment bucket is you're saying, we're not going to need it in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. We're going to use it and put it towards tax relief as another, essentially it becomes another revenue source in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And that's my, my understanding is that's been a pretty longstanding practice of this board, at least for the last four or five years. That, that assignment to the prior, following year's budget has been a recommendation of the administration. But it is, again, because you said it, you can always undo it, but because you said that that's what you want it to be used for, that's what we're going to do with it, you know, we, we place it in the budget as it actually becomes like the second line item in the budget.
Kind of like an inbound, a revenue.
Yeah, it's a revenue, it's exactly right, it's a revenue. And once we've set it aside as a revenue, it can't be used for anything else. The analogy I would use is, right now, we have seven million dollars in our capital reserve. However, the first six million of that is set aside for the referendum, which means we really only have one. So we start talking about our fund balance. If you take the recommendation of the administration and assign five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to next year's budget, that money is, it's, it's there. that money is, it's it's there. It's for next year's budget. We can't do anything else with it. Same thing goes for capital reserve. The way the system is set up is, at this point in time, you have to declare, you have to do your best to estimate and then declare where you want to put things. And and in making these recommendations tonight, we're doing two things. We're following the board's longstanding practice of putting the max into that unrestricted fund balance, putting a considerable amount into next next year's budget, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and then putting whatever remains in capital reserve. Because at that point, it gets reserved in a way where it it's ours to be used specifically for that purpose. This is a longstanding best practice, and it's been a longstanding practice of our district now, as I can see for several years.
Right. If we put it in that middle bucket in the in the what's now five eighty-four, could that be used in that budget year for capital projects? I mean, we could still use it for capital projects, right?
It's just a matter that it We could, but it's at risk.
To the state taking it away.
That's correct.
Right.
If, go ahead, Mrs. On.
Oh, I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to a couple of other things. Because when Chris talks about longstanding practice, please keep that in the context of multiple years of audit reports without exceptions. So this longstanding practice is one that, you know, our our auditors are fully aware of and that this is, you know, again, no exceptions on any of our audit reports. Additionally, caution, as we move forward to developing a new five-year capital plan, as well as contemplating food service options, that we, after the referendum amount presently are only, we have an inadequate amount of capital reserve to pay for a kitchen if that is an option that the board chooses to pursue. Those are the numbers, right? Yeah.
Inadequate if B seven does not pass?
It's, yeah, go ahead.
So so we get one bite at a sample. We have to do a, i- if we choose to put money in a reserve account, we have to do it between June one and June thirty. And our only meeting is tonight. So that's that's the law and how it's been, how it's been established. And what I would also say is what B seven does is it is it gives the administration the authority to recommend that. If we don't, if we don't do it, we can't. But if we do, it doesn't mean it's, that's what's going to come to pass. Because first of all, we need to have that much money at the end of the day to make it happen. If we don't have it, can't do it. And the second is, we work with our auditor to put forward financial statements for the board to accept. And that process hasn't even begun yet. This is really the first step in the process. Well, the first step is is the establishment of an estimate. And then, once we've established that, we talk about it with the finance committee. We make a recommendation on what, how we want to handle these funds. And then, basically, we see how good a job we did. Yes. And then, you know, we take the recommendation, put them in the buckets, and then we we follow what your guidance is on this. And you're not your guidance, your instructions.
Right.
And that's how it goes.
So, Miss, I I'm, if I could say, I appreciate you bringing up both those points because I I feel like we always have excess money at the, probably for a decade now, we always wind up with this excess surplus. And and my objection here, pardon me, my objective is to get some of that back to the taxpayers if we've over budgeted during the year, right? Or at least allow us to possibly do that in future years. But I really appreciate you bringing that up because I think you, the administration and the board has been absolutely very upfront and open and transparent with the budgeting. And there's no way that I'm thinking that we're in any way doing anything wrong or or not being conservative. I think the budgeting principles have been good as far as I've seen, you know, for the three years. On the second point, the kitchen point, I think the three options that we have might be, the capital reserve might be now, the balance might be one point four.
One, it's one, when you exclude the six million, it's 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 unclear how much the debt issue is going to cost us too with rising interest rates. So I would assume you have one million dollars in capital.
Right, so we might need a more, because I think there were the options, Mr. Weinstein, where I think like one point four, one point five million, like the first option. But if we build out a whole new one, it's like two million. So maybe we could put some in the capital reserve, but also leave a bit, or or what I would propose is putting maybe another million in the capital reserve and the remainder in the, on Alec, in the assignment of fund balance bucket, so that we do have the ability to use it for other items in the ensuing school year, ensuing fiscal year or tax relief. I don't know how else to get it to tax relief other than putting it in that second bucket.
Call on me, then, Dr. Mingle. So two things that come to mind, awesome discussion. So thank you to the board for this. So if it, if the money goes into the assignment that and it counts as revenue, that my understanding, might be wrong, is part of the formula for how state aid is formed, because we now have revenue. No, state state aid is a calculation. State aid for us is a very, very simple calculation. It's a combination of special ed. We get special ed aid, we get three types of aid. We get special ed aid, transportation aid, and security aid. It's been slowly increasing as the state has been increasing aid across the board. And it doesn't, how we account for things on our year end doesn't, doesn't really impact our state aid today. With that said, when we lost aid back twelve years ago and when our reserves were taken from us, the decisions that are made tonight were very critical in how that calculation happened then. So, you know, the the, one of the reasons why this best practice came to be is, you know, the five hundred or so people that do what I do for a living have gotten very conservative about this to put it in restricted accounts. So you never lose it again.
Understood. The second, I guess, the point I wanted to make, well, thank you, by the way, for that, that's helpful, was in capital reserve, if if we have money in capital reserve. This, this board, certainly with the help of administration, has been extremely successful with referendums. So a dollar in capital reserve goes more than a dollar in another fund, because we get essentially a coupon from the state, assuming the voters pass. That's a big step. So I don't want to overlook that, but we've been, if we're looking to give back a dollar, a dollar twenty-six, or whatever it works out to be, dollar fifty, dollar fifty, I'll take the dollar fifty myself, but that's just me. Thank you. Thank you. Let me, let me work backwards from that comment, because that was one of the ones I wanted to highlight. I think the board should celebrate the tax savings it's realized for the residents through the use of capital reserve to that point. So over the course of these two referendums in the last five years, we've done, we will have done somewhere around nine million dollars in projects for six million dollars of taxpayer money. That that third kicked in by the state is only available because the board had money in capital reserve from the last decades worth of putting in this money at the end of the year. So that's one. As far as the amounts, it's only gone over two million dollars in the COVID years, if you will. So nineteen twenty, we realized huge extra savings because we weren't running buses, et cetera, et cetera. Twenty twenty-one, insurance and other projects were put on hold. And then this year, you've already heard from the finance committee before that, the last year was one point four, something, you know, between one and two most years. Who knows what the, what that means for the future, but obviously, we've been in these weird situations the last couple of years. And then, as Mr. Hegel said, it's a longstanding practice, but I also want to say it's also a board-approved practice now. And so, obviously, the board can change that. That's what B fifteen does. But the board felt strongly enough about this being the way to budget for long-term capital needs, which, as Mr. Hegel said, while we've been, we've done a lot of work, we run old buildings and they always need work. There will be another round of projects and another round. The question is whether the money will be there or if taxes will have to be raised on an annual basis to pay for them, which we haven't had to do. We've only gone over the two percent once in the last eleven years because of this kind of method of budgeting. So none of that means it can't be changed, but I thought the historical context could be helpful.
I'd like to speak for a minute, not as chair of finance. Board members on. Costs a lot to buy gas in my car, right? Grocery bill's pretty high. I have a lot of sympathy for, you know, looking at every possible way in which we can keep as low as as possible and still do our job, the tax impact on our residents, particularly the fact, you know, bearing in mind that the majority of our residents don't have students in our schools. Although they, you know, one hopes that everybody's property values benefit from the exceptional schools that that we have long been able to ensure day to day. You know, I think that we have to be accountable to what is the tax burden that we are expecting our fellow residents to pay. When I, when I look at that, I look at it as a kind of not a today and this year budget question, but a long-term budget question. And I have been doing that from the beginning. Anybody who's around, when I began this six years ago, knows that day one, I was saying, inadequate capital reserves is big class sizes waiting to happen. Because what happens when you have, our buildings are the age they are, and they have the needs they have. They will always need new roofs. The ability to put security vestibules on our schools is because we had adequate funds in our capital reserves. So meeting the increasing needs of securing our buildings and the infrastructure, that those are ongoing responsibilities of this body. And if we get to a need that is a capital need, which is an uninsured item, and we have to pay for it and we do not have adequate capital reserves, we let teachers go. And our class sizes go up. I mean, that is, you have to take a look at our budget, eighty-three percent or something is benefit, is payroll unrelated benefits. The other two big items are utilities and transportation. And we have no influence over the cost of utilities or the cost of transportation. So when, you know, I I'm very proud of having been on a board, which for half a dozen years or more, has been able to annually put together a budget which has had the barest minimum impact financially on the local residents. And I'm very mindful that as we see our enrollment rise, please note today's additional staff hirings for actual increases in enrollment, which is the beginning of future increases in enrollment. I think it's, it would be highly speculative to suggest that a year from now, we'll be experiencing this level of E O I's. The the numbers that we have been able to put in through cautious budgeting and non-replicable good fortune isn't going to be there. As I move forward, I would want to make sure I know that the amount that we have currently sitting in capital reserve is likely inadequate for the capital project we currently have on our, on our plate, let alone anything that might appear in a five-year capital plan. So, you know, as as the chair of the finance committee, I try to guide things in a way that's not too, you know, I don't want to be the heavy hand. Everyone, I hope, feels that their voice is is heard. I try to keep as quiet as I can. But these are the concerns that cause me to, for this year, and maybe not for every year, right? But for this year, just take a look at where's, where are we capital reserve-wise after we deal with the referendum? What are the capital improvement plans that we have immediately in front of us and can reasonably anticipate in a short timeframe? And why wouldn't we protect the monies necessary for that if we have that available to to deposit to the reserves? While at the same time, increasing the tax relief footprint from, you know, four sixty up to five eighty for the hundred and twenty thousand dollar additional to the budget, going into this uncertain next year where we anticipate an increase of enrollment and an increase in need for free and reduced lunches, and what that might, the burden that might put upon our capital reserve account, that seems to me to be the prudent balance between the needs of the district, the responsibilities we have as board members, and the least possible burden on the taxpayers.
So the only way we can use some of that excess two point five for tax relief in the future would be to put it in that middle bucket, though, right? To increase that five eighty-four. Assignment of fund balance, thank you once again. So I, yeah, I just, I I don't know, I appreciate the inflation, you know, the impact of that on the taxpayer. So I'm just trying to leave us with the option of reducing the tax burden for the taxpayer, given inflation and everything else, but also allowing us to use it for things like inflation on our budget and increased staffing because of increased enrollment, all of which can only be done through that middle bucket. You cannot do that through a capital reserve, which is restricted just to capital projects. So that that's the background in my thinking.
One comment. It would, I don't think, be prudent to use one-time pots of money, one-time sources of revenue for long-term operational needs. I wouldn't use it to hire staff. Because the following year, where do we get the money for the payroll for that staff?
Or tax relief, back to tax relief then, I guess. Yeah. So so I could see increasing the deposit to capital reserve by a million dollars gets us a two million in total, which is by far paying for the cafeteria, even in the biggest twenty-seven hundred square foot cafeteria addition, you know, scenario, the the biggest and best cafeteria of the three that would get us to two million. If we if we allocated one million to the capital reserve, that would get us to two million in total in the capital reserve, pay for the cafeteria, and then we could at least leave the remainder of the two point five, which would be one point five million, for varied uses, including tax relief.
Yeah. I I I'm not saying where the money should or shouldn't go, but I think it's potentially incorrect to say that it would fully fund the cafeteria. We don't know what that number is in totality. At least I don't. Unless you're, you've got stats, I don't.
No, I was just looking at the three different, we have a high and a low, and I think the biggest twenty-seven square foot, I think it was two point one million. I forget with the two point five. So maybe you put one point five in the capital reserve.
That also leaves us in a position where if we do have a capital need for the depleted capital fund, where do we get that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think Mrs. On's point is correct. We we cut staff.
It's like one, one-time fees, i.e. building a cafeteria, just the building, not the maintenance of the staff, et cetera, versus recurring cost, teacher salary. And those are, those are different items that pull from different places with money that's either accrued or there in a one-time use case. So I think it's, I think it's a valid point.
Sorry, just a clarifying question. B fifteen, which is more accountable to schools' fund balance procedure, essentially approves the procedure we have been using, which is what we're doing tonight. Well, what was proposed tonight, right? The
It adds the one-twenty.
Yeah.
It adds one-twenty.
So this was approved, I believe, it should be on the top. I believe it was approved in October initially. And this edit only edits the section on the assignment, and it takes all the numbers that were approved in October and adds one-twenty to it.
And the reason for the one-twenty was, I think it was Mr. Desai when in our April meeting, the midnight, April twenty-fifth. Yes, that was, that was Mr. Desai's point of giving that, I'm going to say, back to taxpayers. So the spirit of that was to do exactly that, which I think was, is along the lines of Mr. Bishi, if I'm understanding.
I'm just talking about the same thing on a bigger scale.
Yeah, understood. Okay. It's helpful. Back to B seven, if we may. That was the item on the floor. Any further discussion? A roll call vote? Or motion, or if you're comfortable, if not, I will.
No, I think so. I think a motion to approve item B seven for clarification.
Second.
I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi?
Uh, no.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi? Mr. Bishi, I'm sorry. It's not even, not even like yet.
Does that count for two?
Yeah, yes. I'm sorry. All right, the motion passes seven one.
Moving on to item B fifteen. Discussion in our
Discussion and or questions to be had, I think we probably covered this a little bit would be seven.
So so this is, sorry, this is the addition of the one hundred thirty K, one twenty, one twenty. Okay. Into. Into the capital reserve, no, right? This is a different.
So so what this pot of money is, is this, this, so. Board has a standing practice of putting some amount of the of the prior year surplus into the next budget that we're going to approve. For twenty three, twenty four. And what we said in April was when we do that, we want to. Pay pay for the student experiences out of. Fund balance savings. And that is essentially codifying that commitment.
Okay.
That was made that night into our board procedure, not a policy, so it doesn't sit on this website as a policy. It's a board procedure, but but when we, when Mary Grace and I put together the budget, we pull out the procedure and we follow it.
Yep, okay, I remember. Thank you.
Any other discussion, clarifications, questions? Ms. Keller?
Motion to move item B fifteen worth consideration.
Second.
Mr. Bishi?
No.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
This is DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
And Mr. Brizzy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven one. Thank you. That is all we have for. Board items and actions for this evening unfinished business.
Sorry, I don't know if this is unfinished business or not, because we had talked about it at a few meetings prior. So it could be or could you do, oh, sorry, it could be unfinished or new business, I'm not sure. And I'm probably should have asked this during committee reports, but I was wondering if the Finance and Security Committee had. Brought back up the discussion of school resource officers in the most recent committee meeting. I know that I believe we're still currently undergoing a security audit, so I'm assuming that that would. Any discussions of actions or changes in current security status would be made subsequent to that audit. But I just wanted to clarify that that was the case.
As Chair?
Please.
Yes, it's not off the table. We are going to be moving forward with the Prosecutor's Office. As well as, you know, again, I want to draw attention to the approved. Increase from part time to full time of our security compliance officer. So and and I don't, I don't want to suggest to anybody that. We suddenly woke up and thought security was a good idea. This, this body has been extremely proactive with regard to the security recommendations that we've received in multiple. Prior security audits by the leading professionals in the field. And and we regularly revisit those audits and again, seek from professionals guidance as to. You know, where do we stand currently on the, what is the best practices for security? So whether or not an S R O in light of our overall security. Posture, the full details of which I can't disclose here, whether one particular additional element might be added, might be recommended, is something that we will see. But certainly that conversation is is always something that the committee engages in.
Thank you. And and just to clarify, I think it's a great point that the security audit we're currently undergoing preceded any of the most recent events from, you know, in 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 our town even. And so certainly, I think the 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 board and the Finance Security Committee have always been very proactive about that, so.
Any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business, I'm gonna do my best here. So if you thought the finance report was confusing. Not the report. The topic, I apologize, B seven. Okay. Watch Young Hills Regional High School, the regional high school that includes Warren. As a result of the twenty twenty census. The Warren Township gains an additional seat at the expense, I believe, of Long Hill due to the way the numbers work out. That's part of a regional high schools work. Beyond this board. What that means is in this coming election, November of twenty twenty two. There, prior to all this, there were two seats on the agenda because Warren had four seats. It was a cycle of two, one and one, they're all three year terms. Two, one, one, two, one, one, two, one, one. So what that means is this coming November. With the census results in. Warren will have three seats. This is for the Watch Young Hills Regional High School, not this board. We will also have three, but that's different. And the Watch Young Hills Regional High School reached out and asked. If if this board would consider. Making a motion, we have the language. To adjust it so it's two, two, one instead of three, one, one. So two this year, two next year, one the following year. For reasons that I don't understand in the state of New Jersey, the Watch Young Hills Board cannot make that. Request, it has to be ascending district, I believe. That makes that request. So I spoke to Mr. Morrison and I said I would bring it up to the board and. Here, here with the board has to say, I believe they came to Warren first because it is Warren seats that are being discussed, so. If there's anything I can. Please.
Just a minor, we have the wording of any, if if you want the exact language from the attorney, but. You don't have the authority to actually change it. What you would be doing is. Filing a note, a petition of appeal, asking the Commissioner to change it. That's just a.
That's very important.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much for that. Mrs. Zon, I saw your hand first.
Is an alternative option available where we do three, but not for three years so that we get them on a two, two, one cycle without giving up. A seat right now to another district. That would go to the representation of our town. I mean, if the census says that we are underrepresented. I have a hard time consenting on behalf of Warren to an underrepresentation.
I I may have. Misstated what's going to happen and I apologize. Another town will not get this seat if this board does not take action. We, Warren, for the Watch Young Hills Regional High School. Will end up with five seats. Currently, they have four.
Right.
They will end up with five.
Right.
Regardless. It's a matter of for this coming November election. Will there be two names on the ballot or three names on the ballot? As it currently stands with no action.
Two names are on the ballot.
There will be three with the addition of the new seat as a result of the census.
Okay, and they want us to do what? Not have that third seat on the ballot?
Somebody will be extended.
Someone will be extended?
Yes.
Okay, please explain this to me more clearly.
Okay, I asked that question. I asked that question. The answer I got back, I will read just to. Oh, okay. So, so this is, this is exactly what petitioning the Commissioner for. Extend the the term of one Warren board member on the Watch Young Hills Regional Board of Education, whose term is set to expire this year by one year. Until the organization meeting in January twenty twenty four, resulting in two Warren seats being on the twenty, excuse me, the November twenty twenty two ballot. Instead of three Warren seats and take action otherwise alter the terms of the members of the constituent petition of districts in accordance with. NJSA eighteen A thirteen dash nine, which I'd have to reference. So.
I would really love to see that. Is this is some, is this something we have to move on tonight? I would love to like.
I don't know the timeline, to be honest with you.
So we only have one copy of the legal memo. If that's something the board wants to see, I think we should send it to you. We have a motion language.
My understanding is yes, for the same result. I, that's my understanding, yes. So it's a little challenging because it's a different district and I I, I'll be honest, I don't know the workings of a regional high school, so or or their boards, so. Mr. Crowson, please.
The only. Comment I would add to Mrs. Zon's question about a timeline is that I believe petitions to run for seats are due. Before our next board meeting, maybe.
Might be around that time. That's a really good point.
Might, yeah, it might be a close.
It's a really good point.
Timeline, so. Even even if it's not, you could be in a situation where there's only a two week period from, you know, and and that's to say, you know, we send this at at our July board meeting. There may not be a decision from from the state within, you know. Several weeks, you could be blowing past the timelines and they have to file for that third seat.
So you're not. You're not filing for the seat, you're filing for a.
To be able to run.
Ballot, a position on the ballot, and then the election picks the seat.
Right.
So I I I accept, what you brought up was really valid and I didn't think of that. The the July timeline, July twenty fifth? Good point. I'm glad you brought it up.
But if. Somebody knows that there's three seats versus two, does that impact the decision about whether?
I understand completely. Yeah, I understand.
Just one, one comment about the legal guidance. It's not from our, it's not from your. Attorney, it's from the Watch Young Hills Regional High School.
Well, the board attorney. Well, that it's pre written for us to be able to send it in, yes.
So this is on back to a question that I think you had, and if I apologize if you.
I'm just very confused. Go ahead.
No, it's, I I'm with you. It will be up to the Commissioner to choose which seat gets extended is my understanding.
Okay, alright. The high school's known about this for a long time. It came up in their board meeting like months ago. Why are we just getting this now on the eve of elections? Filings?
I can't speak for that board. I.
No, you can't. It was an unfair question. I apologize. I withdraw the question.
I believe there was an appeal and I.
That was their intent. I gather their appeal was unsuccessful. They were appealing to not give us five seats.
Understood.
Yeah, that was the, yeah. Us being, not us, us being.
Understood, yes.
The census overruled them, basically, right? The numbers told them no.
Yeah, it, we're, so what we're here tonight, this topic is not about the numbers. This is topic is about, well, it's about the numbers of three, one, one or two, two, one, not the numbers of the census. That's. That's well beyond this board, as far as I know, yeah.
I have to see that. I can't make a decision. I haven't seen the proposed language. That's, that's my position.
So we have been careful about. Expending Warren Township taxpayer money on legal review because it's not a Warren Township Board of Education. Issue. If you would like us to go that route, we can. If you would rather, we can send you this information that we've received.
Read it myself first.
Yep. But we would want to send it to the whole board.
Yeah, we got this today, this afternoon, so. So as action from this, the board will get a copy of what was shared. Dr. Mingle, would you be able to assist with that? Timing wise, Mr. Rosen had a good question. Don't know. It doesn't sound like there's any action being requested here this evening. I don't let me.
My only concern is if we don't take action on this tonight, what's stopping, there's something in the description doing it. The high school's not satisfied that we cannot take action on it, will they present it to one of the other towns?
They they may, and that's fine, as far as I'm.
Can that have adverse effects on us?
No, it would, it would, it doesn't change the census results. That's my understanding. So it would be, it, yeah, it would. It would be another district saying, we want Warren to have this number of seats, which would probably be really awkward.
But the other thing it would do is it 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 may dissuade a Warren resident candidate from running because they feel like they're up against the clock to get their. Credentials in by July, what was it, twenty six, right? Twenty fifth? No? Okay. I mean, I I guess whoever wants to run has made the decision already, I assume.
If if it would help, because we will be going into into executive and then coming back out with action. We could get copies of this made for the whole board during that time so that you could read over it. I don't know if you're, you're gonna want to make a decision on the fly anyway, but at least you'd have it in your hands.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Kimic or. Doctor, somebody, you could just make copies for the board. That way you're, you'll still be in, you you can still take action if you want to at that time.
Any other new business items? Moving on to public commentary, this is the second of two public commentary. This can be on any item. Regardless of its being on the agenda or not. You kindly state your name, address, group affiliation, if appropriate. You will have three minutes to provide the board with your comments and feedback. We would certainly appreciate it. Please direct all comments to myself. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? If you could kindly use the raise your hand feature, we will call on you and you'll have three minutes to provide the board with your. Comments. Seeing none, is there a motion to close public commentary?
Motion second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, public commentary is now closed. Uh, we will now move on to. Uh, there is a change in the agenda for the public. There is an additional executive session before the one listed at the end of the agenda. So it will be very similar to the first executive agenda that we had early in the agenda, so. There will be, next item will be an executive session. The board will come back, there may be action taken, then we will go into a final executive session where after that, no action will be taken and then we will close. Due to personnel, no. I don't think so. We have to come back if we are going to take action.
It's gonna be a much longer.
It'll be a longer session, so, yeah, you you don't want that either. Yes, please.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four dash eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss material, the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, student matter. And pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and or matters of attorney client privilege. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meetings anticipated to be approximately fifteen minutes. Be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
This is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the board is now in executive session.
Yeah.
Motion to return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstention, the board is back in public session. Ms. Keller.
A motion to approve item for board consideration A nine. I'm gonna read it. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby affirms the determination of HIV investigation eight five nine zero.
Second. Alright, I'm motion number A nine. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Croson?
No.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
I'm staying.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
No.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on.
Yes.
Mr. Rizzi?
Yes.
Let's see. One, two, three, four, five. Motion passes five two with one abstention.
Mr. Hagel. The board will now move into its, well, attempt, oh, third executive session.
Ms. Keller. Yes, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four dash eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss specific prospective or current employees. Unless all who could be adversely affected requested open session superintendent evaluation deliberation after a public hearing that could result in a civil penalty or other loss. Action will not be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately sixty minutes and be it further resolved. The minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed abstentions, the board is going back into executive session. Where will we?
We're gonna go back to the.